Call the media order. How can we rise to the pledge of allegiance?
And tonight, the pledge of allegiance is gonna-
Tonight, tonight Tom's gonna lead off the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Thomas.
Thanks, Thomas. We're gonna have the, uh, the roll call.
Labor.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Nako? Mr. Getchere?
Yes. Kelly, do we have anybody to speak, uh, register public?
Negative.
Do we have any school community communications? Uh, we're gonna waive the report of the student representative tonight because he's, uh, not with us. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from August thirty first?
Second.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes. Can we get a motion to waive the reading of the warrant? Treasurers warrant?
Motion to waive.
Can we get a motion to approve the expenditure of three million, seven hundred and, oh, sorry, yeah.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes. Can I get a motion to approve the expenditure of three million, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, fifty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents?
Second.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes. And the report of the general counsel, we're gonna be going to executive session afterwards, so we'll hit for the general counsel.
That's correct, Mr. Getchere.
Superintendent's report?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, the first item on my agenda, I would like to welcome and ask our Skills USA lead advisor, Ms. Sharon Cornelia, to introduce and formally recognize our Skills USA national competitors and medal winners who are here this evening with us.
Good evening. Thank you Superintendent Davis for inviting us here to celebrate our champions. Many of you know that Skills USA is the largest student organization in the country and the only organization that provides students in all career and technical education clusters opportunities. What you may not know is that two independent studies have demonstrated that Skills USA members have higher GPAs, more exposure to potential employers, and are better prepared for workforce and continuing education. Skills USA members outperform non-members in all key areas of focus, including licensure and certifications, work experience, career clarity, and direction. These advantages persist across all demographics, including gender, race, and socioeconomics. The study also accounted for a student's natural willingness to join a club and found achievement boosts even amongst students who may not typically participate in extracurricular activities. This is what we call the Skills USA advantage and why we are so proud to have a school committee, administration, and community that recognizes the importance of our programs and activities. Because of your support, our chapter had a great deal of success last year with several new initiatives, including shop recognition programs, our student shop representatives program, and greater involvement from our alumni. In addition, this past June, eleven Greater Lowell Technical High School students and five instructors traveled to Atlanta, Georgia for the Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference. We are proud to announce that Greater Lowell claimed one national medal and two national awards for our chapter's programs and activities. In addition, all six of our technical competitors were top ten finishers and achieved Skill Point certification. Skill Point certification is an industry credential and it represents the pinnacle of achievement in demonstrating proficiency and workplace readiness. It's important to note that a minimum Skill Point score is challenging to achieve. In fact, there are contests where a student may rank high enough to medal, even get the gold medal, but not score high enough to achieve this credential. This makes our students' achievements even more impressive. Please join me in congratulating our Skills USA national team, beginning with our technical competitors. Finishing tenth in the nation and earning Skill Point certification in robotics urban search and rescue, the team of Riley McCafferty and Nicholas Marice. Riley is currently a senior in engineering from Drakehead and Nick is a junior in engineering from Lowell. They are two-time national competitors and top-ten finishers and are looking forward to making it a three-time. Finishing eighth in the nation and earning Skill Point certification in employment application process and portfolio, Jasmine Sanchez. Jasmine is currently a senior in marketing education and resides in Drakehead. She is a two-time national competitor, national champion, and two-time Skills USA chapter officer. Finishing fourth in the nation, the highest we have ever achieved in a contest in this area, and earning Skill Point certification in three D visualization and animation, the team of Michael Reynolds and Angelina LaKang. Mikey and Angie are currently seniors in information technology and both reside in Lowell. Coming in fourth place in this competitive contest as sophomores, we are thrilled to see what they do next year. And last but not least, our gold medalist in principles of engineering technology with Skill Point certification, Mamadi Kamara. Mamadi is currently a senior in engineering from Lowell and worked with our alumni partners, who are engineers, to develop his project on things that I don't understand very well, but it was super impressive. In addition to our technical success, for the eighth consecutive year, Greater Lowell was selected as a national model of excellence and for the ninth consecutive year, a gold level chapter of distinction. Our chapter officer team representatives, Giovanna Mason, a senior, and Amelie Morgan-Tommel, had the opportunity to present our program to the national committee. Giovanna is a senior in information technology from Lowell and Amelie is a senior in health assisting from Drakehead. We were featured also in the Models of Excellence booklet that is available for you tonight along with copies of the Skills USA advantage study, which are on the corner of the table as you're leaving. Greater Lowell also served in a leadership capacity at the national event, with three students serving on the national congress as national voting delegates. I'd like to take a moment to repres- to recognize Laura Barton, a junior in medical assisting, who is from, who is from the town of Drakehead. Thomas Marshall, a junior in health assisting, who has been elected to serve as this year's Massachusetts State Secretary and comes from Drakehead. And unable to be here tonight, now graduate Elizabeth Hughes, who represented our school and our state in her role as Massachusetts State Vice President, from Drakehead. And finally, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize our amazing staff who took a week of our summer vacation to join me in Atlanta with our champions. My co-advisors Bradley Taylor and Jacob Espinola, and instructors Stephen King and Andrea Maile Roy. Once again, on behalf of our Skills USA advisors and integration team, we would like to thank you for all that you do to support our students, our teachers, and our Skills USA programs. We are looking forward to another year of success and we really can't wait for you to see all that our students accomplish. Thank you.
Just wanna take the opportunity to thank you guys. You really truly make us look good. When you go out there and represent us and you do exactly what you're doing, you make us look good as a board and a school. So I wanna thank each and every one of you. Thank you and keep up the great work.
I just wanna add that we are so very proud of all of you. You know, I'm a super duper supporter of Skills USA and the Skills USA program. We're proud of you, we're proud of your accomplishments, and we're proud of the way you represent our school core values and you are role models of students for vocational technical education. So thank you again. I look forward to seeing, uh, your new achievements, what's coming up, uh, in this school year. And again, we're so very, very proud of you.
Thank you.
Before you go, wait a minute, I think they want us.
Thank you.
Good job, John, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You took another one? It's okay, you have to talk to them. You got me in, you got me in skills.
The next item on my, on my agenda, I'd like to introduce and formally recognize seven of our students who participate as Hi-Five student leaders who were able to be here tonight along with their Hi-Five facilitator or dean of students, Mr. Ron Versalone. So I'd like to, am I calling them up one at a time to say something?
Yeah, I think it, it deserves an order.
Okay, so our first student, first of all, I think they're here tonight to share about their experience as part of the Hi-Five, uh, program, which they attended this summer and some of them might have attended more than one summer. And, uh, some of the things that they're doing here to support, uh, to, to support us here at school. Some of their leadership activities. So first, I'd like to, uh, ask Anna DeBona to come up to share her experiences as part of the Hi-Five leadership program. You can sit at the table, Anna DeBona. Are we looking at something on the screen or not yet?
Um, not quite yet.
Oh.
Miss Ava Ziyagos. Um, so my name is Anna DeBona. I'm a sophomore in the pre-nursing help assisting program here at Greater Lowell, um, and I'm from Drakehead. When asked by Mr. Versalone, when asked by Mr. Versalone to briefly speak on my experience within the student leadership program in Rattleboro, my mind was racing with what and how I would express the content and impact three short days with a small group of other students and staff. Despite just being an incredible college application essay topic, the Hi-Five program was an intense, cold, and incredibly rewarding program that allowed students to bond as a group in a way that only sharing the same swamp water in your socks can. Throughout the week, directors asked participants to step out of their comfort zone and into their stretch zone, something that mediators were aware would look different from participant to participant. Whether it was getting to a certain point on the challenge course, calling a member of the teaching staff or administration by their first name for the week, disregarding the beware bear sign posted outside of their cabin, and trudging off for a late night walk led by the light of a single green glow stick, being vulnerable and open with students you had met about an hour prior, or allowing another participant's safety and wellbeing to rest in your hands and rope. Each member identified their desired area of growth and tackled it head-on. As the program wrapped up on Thursday afternoon, participants were given a moment to come together into smaller groups and discuss aspects of their adolescence and teenage experiences, how things had changed and remained stagnant throughout the years. This, this exercise joined all three major groups of participants together as well as offered an opportunity to be vulnerable and share things that participants may need support through or just a listening ear. Later, as we assembled as a whole, participants were asked to share how they saw aspects of leadership and growth in others throughout the week. This exercise not only was a beautiful way to complete our time together, but also allowed participants to communicate openly and hold up a mirror to themselves and one another, caring way with themselves, a refreshed and wider perspective, sense of self heightened confidence, probably a couple of bruises, but most importantly, an expansion of community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Um, hello, I'm Rebecca Garcia. I'm a junior in health assisting and I'm from Lowell. This summer, I was given the opportunity to go to Vermont. If you had told me freshman year that I would be involved in the school like I am now, I would have looked at you funny and laughed and asked if you were talking to the right person. The summer after freshman year, I decided to be a student leader at this summer enrichment program we have. Going to the training days, I knew no one. I knew of a person because we were in the same shop and we had a brief conversation. That summer, I had a whole bunch of friends but stuck close to three. Two of the three went to Vermont that summer. They came back and were like, if you have a chance to go, go. One would rave about it and keep saying, you need to experience it for yourself. So when Mr. Versalone asked me if I wanted to go, I said yes. Not just because of my friends, but because I knew I would learn more about leadership and add to my leadership skills, and I did. It opened my eyes a lot. I thought a leader was someone who had authority or power over a group of people, mostly students, but now I think of a leader as anyone. A leader is someone who can change one aspect of your life without even knowing, or someone who guides you in any way. Going back to my time in Vermont, a thing stuck out to me. The staff that went to Vermont felt equal with the students. They didn't care that, that they were a teacher and that we, the students, were students. All we cared about was making sure everyone was safe and having a good time. The same thing happened at the admin retreat. We as students put our trust in the administration and teachers each day to keep our school environment safe. The day of the retreat, we had a rope reversal. Students were the facilitators and the admins were the one learning about the ropes course. We made sure that they felt safe and were secure at all times. Lastly, I want to thank all the people who made it possible for all of us to go up to Hi-Five this summer.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hi.
My name is Erin Mullet. I am a junior in carbon tree from Drakehead, Mass. I never thought I would be a part of a school as, part of the school as I am today. I was part of the student enrichment program this past summer, working with the school to make it a better place for students. During the whole time, I heard that there are rumors that I might be, um, picked to go to Vermont trip. I had no idea what it was about. My first thought was, I don't wanna go. It took me a while to s- to say to myself, I can do this, I'll go. I was scared. I didn't wanna leave home. When I got to schoo- when I got to school to go to the Vermont trip, I was a little nervous but excited. When we arrived, I knew there was no turning back now. For the first hour, I only talked to people I felt comfortable with, then I started to talk to people I did not, I didn't know. I talked to all of them for the rest of the trip and I'm talking to them still to this day. After the first day, there was, there I was having fun, even when it was forty-five degrees at night and freezing cold. When I woke up, I wasn't ready for the day 'cause I heard there was a night, that might be happening that night. But during the day, I had fun belaying. I liked how the, the teachers and students trusted me to belay for them. Their safety was in my hands and I didn't mind it. The night came and they said, we are doing a night walk. The whole time, I was talking to myself, try- trying to relax. Once I finished, I was so relieved and grateful. I didn't give up. After that, I was sad that I had le- leave the next day. We got, all got along, the teachers, students, and the great people from Hi-Five. Not one student or had to say mister or miss. We got the chance to call them by their first names. We were all equal there. I am so grateful I got the chance to go to Vermont with a full-paid trip. I had, I have made more friends and confidence and experience and I would love to go again next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ooh, hi, I'm nervous.
Relax, you've got it.
Hi, my name is Anari Tess. I am a sophomore in the marketing education and I am from Lowell. I'm sorry, I am not prepared at all. But I would like to say thank you for providing me this opportunity. I've never experienced something like this at all. And like, it really surprised me to, um, be invited to a new place like this. I usually don't go out much. And this experience has really taught me a lot. I didn't know anybody going there. I was really alone. The most I knew were, um, the teachers. Um, and, ooh, Jesus, excuse me. It was a place that I wasn't really used to. I am more used to the city than being more outdoors. And I have to be honest, that place really disgusted me a lot. But the most I enjoyed were the moments I spent with my peers. I really felt equal with everybody. We all shared, like, our thoughts on everything that, like, we've experienced so far. Um, gliding into the river, I got really soaked and wet. Literally, it was, it felt so gross. I'm so sorry. But, uh, I can't say that this experience had taught me to look at leadership a different way and grow, um, at different perspectives in my own pace with my peers. I really learned to come out of my comfort zone and put myself out there and experience new things that I've never done in my life before. So, I'm sorry this was short, but I would like to say thank you very much.
Excellent.
Good evening. My name is Tyler Pafcanno. I am from Drakehead and I am a sophomore in plumbing. I have to admit that I would not normally be the student standing up in front of you and speaking, but I am leaving my comfort zone and stepping into my stretch zone, big time. My experience at Hi-Five this summer was my first time being away from my family and sleeping in a cabin. I've learned a lot about myself. The night walk was a challenge for me. It was a moment where it was me by myself in the woods and it was dark. I found myself reflecting a lot, especially on my family and home. I had to keep pushing forward and follow the light. As you can see, I made it. I was happy to see Ms. Cecini was attending the edge of leadership as one of the chaperones. When I had Ms. Cecini for exploratory, I felt an instant connection with her, especially connected with her at the edge of leadership. When we were trying to traverse over the pond as a group, I felt like Ms. Cecini and I were collaborating and sharing ideas. I didn't feel like she was the doll and I was a kid. I felt like that we were equal. When first, when we first learning to belay, I think Ms. Cecini wasn't comfortable at all because it was a student belay. But she learned to trust me and I belayed for her four times. That is the one special thing as my, as my experience there. On the last day, we were in smaller groups and the Hi-Five staff had a stake, talking to each other about our experiences. I learned that I'm very good at climbing. I don't think of myself as a leader, but I do know that others do. I do what I do 'cause that is who I am and that's what I do. I don't think about it. I feel like it's the whatever situation I'm put in, I don't have constraints. A few weeks after, I had a chance to facilitate for the administrators on our challenge course. I felt like that I was an equal when, when I was facilitating. Thank you, Mr. Barton, for allowing me to assist you with your harness and getting you ready for this afternoon. Ms. Davis, thank you for allowing me to facilitate for all of you. As a facilitator, you need to find where people are at. You hold real responsibility. You can't drop them. Thank you, Ms. Davis, and all of you for making this opportunity possible for me.
Thank you for that.
Hello, my name is Logan Briggs and I am a senior in health assistant from Lowell. I would like to thank you for believing in this opportunity and allowing me to go to the edge of leadership. And not just once, but I got to go a second time as a facilitator. As a facilitator, I had a very different role than when I was a participant. I led the events and acted as a role model for the new group of participants. As someone who did experience what it was like to be a participant, it was very interesting to observe and have connections or have conversations with people who were new to this experience. When I put myself in leadership positions, I always wanted to be a perfect reflection of strength and positivity. However, that's not too easy when I did not feel this way personally. I was trying to set an example, but I wasn't being true to myself. I thought I was helping by always showing strength and I hid my flaws, afraid I would look weak. However, during a dialogue we had on the last day in Vermont, we got into deep and personal conversations. And that's when I realized that what I see as flaws are actually the things that make me human and can actually be inspiring to others who might have similar struggles. For example, if someone is struggling and someone who they see as a leader portrays themselves as being all put together, they may see their struggles as a weakness. Instead, if this leader is honest and true, they might actually connect and become more trusting with those who look up to them. These deep connective conversations, we don't have enough of these days, truly reminded me of why I lead and why it's important to be authentic. This lesson also provided important when working with the admin- administrators. If the administrators are able and willing to show that even adults in positions of authority can have a bad day, students will feel a lot more trusting towards them. My favorite sentence starter I learned on the course that I shared with the administrators is, how would you like to be supported today? If we take the time to evaluate the day-to-day situation and create a plan to find support that works for that particular student at that particular time, we can make true change. As part of our reflection piece on day three, we read Lessons From Geese. One of the lessons states that when the lead goose gets tired, it flies to the back of the formation and another goose from the formation takes the lead. This lesson highlights the importance of working together and sharing roles of leadership. This was often something I struggled with, not because I wanted power, but because I enjoyed the feeling of helping and being a role model. However, this took away the opportunity for other leaders to have the same opportunities. Something that was interesting when we facilitated the admin retreat was that surprisingly, we found it difficult to get the administrators to quiet down and focus on our instructions. Some of this has to do with the fact that it often feels uncomfortable to step back. However, when they did finally take a moment to listen, they were surprised by some of the feedback and lessons we had to offer. Lastly, this opportunity not only helped me grow leadership and build connections, but because of this opportunity, I am actually considering making this a part of my future as I plan for my journey after high school. One of the many things I've learned is that you find so much more about yourself doing things you might be afraid of than doing things that are comfortable. I actually am not a huge fan of heights. However, when I had the opportunity to be the first to climb or the first to reattach a rope, I took it and I was terrified. My legs were always jello when I came down, but I kept overcoming these fears and each time it was a little less scary. None of this would have been possible without your support and for that, I thank you.
Thank you. This is Mr. Versalone, our dean of students and facilitator of the Hi-Five leadership program.
So I think it'd be helpful just for you to be able to visualize a little bit of what students were talking about, so, um, we have just a very brief.
Can we tell them?
Yeah, light.
That's Ms. Fenlo. She's one of the, uh, teachers who, who chaperoned.
Yeah, I'm also.
Well, this is part of, uh, the leadership retreat?
Are you going up the ball?
Uh, no. Mr. Barton did though.
So it's thrilled.
I'm gonna get my cell phone.
So, yeah, it was a great experience. So, yeah, it was a great experience. Oh, that's Mr. Barton right there, I thought that was taken a while there.
Poor Mr. Barton, what did he do for the paycheck?
That's Mrs. Bazanson, she wa- walked across that on top. Mm-hmm. And there are wonderful student leaders who uh, helped facilitate that day.
Cool.
So, thank you.
And then.
Oh, we have one more.
One more person, you may recognize her as soon as she comes up on screen, Eva Ziyagos. She spoke to you, I think, in May. Um, she really wanted to be here, but she keeps a pretty tight schedule and couldn't, so she insisted that she wanted to record her message to you, so um.
Hi, I'm Eva Ziyagos, I'm a junior in marketing and I can't be here tonight, but I wanna share some thoughts about Edge of Leadership. So I have something that I prepared. When someone asks me to use one word to describe myself, I always use the word leader. Two years ago, if you would have asked me if I was a leader, I would have said no. I would have been embarrassed to call myself a leader because I wouldn't have wanted to look at as weird or a teacher's pet. Loving being a leader is one of the many things that I have learned from the last two summers that I have been privileged to attend Edge of Leadership. Since I first received my application and essay packet, my life has completely changed. I am now two years older, a junior in high school. Since I first stepped off the bus and onto High Five's property, I have gotten a job, my license, a car, and so much more. But there is one thing that hasn't changed, the feeling of being at home. I have already spoken about my first summer to you all, so now I would like to tell you about my summer as a facilitator. Pulling into the parking lot and seeing the hill made me very emotional. I knew I was exactly where I was supposed to be. This year, I was lucky enough to return, not only with two fellow returning students, but also four of my best friends. Seeing them in a place that I consider home away from home was an absolutely indescribable feeling. Keeping a secret is a lot harder than I thought. Knowing exactly what big plans that the High Five staff had had in store and not be able to say anything, especially to my best friends, was very difficult for me. Being a facilitator is very different from attending for the first time. I did a lot more listening and observing of my fellow peers than I had done last summer. While taking a step back, being able to listen and watch during this time, I learned so many new things. There are so many different ways that people communicate to others and cope with things. Instead of walking through the night walk this year, I got to sit in the woods and listen and watch. It allowed me to see how my fellow peers reacted to each of the stressors that they had been under. This is also true for the pond activity that we do. I was able to listen and watch how each of the teams work with each other with those stressors. Sharing a space, eating meals, and living with other people that you have just met is such a unique experience. It allows you to really get to know each other like family. Being a leader, you learn to read people pretty well. During one night, we were sitting on the hill and watching the sunset, which is one of my favorite parts of Edge of Leadership. I was talking with one of my fellow students that had also attended the trip and we were talking about leadership and what it makes us feel. He had brought to me that he didn't really know why he had gotten invited, but I see it in him, I see it in all of my friends. Each of them bring their own characteristics and strengths to the table, everyone brings their own style of leadership. There is no set leadership definition. We are also able to bond with each other and share our experiences about things outside of the trip like school or our home lives. Returning this summer meant I had seen the type of adventure course they had. Last year, I never expected to swim through a swamp-like pond or walk through the woods in the dark alone. But this year, I wasn't planning on climbing the pampers pole. For those who don't know, the pampers pole is a forty-foot telephone pole with staples attached to the sides to climb. Once on top, climb or stand and jump to off to reach a bar. While climbing, you are pushed into your stretch zone by trusting each other to belay while you climb. Something I have always lived by is, trust others as they have trusted you. The others trusted me to belay and facilitate for them, so I knew I had to trust them. Even as a facilitator, I still have a stretch zone. Every person has a stretch zone and a stretch zone is an indicator for potential of growth. I wanna thank you all for this opportunity and privilege to attend this amazing and life-changing experience for the last two years.
And then lastly, I just wanted to recognize the four teachers who spent the three days in Vermont. John Hickey, who's in carpentry, Kayla Tessini in medical assisting out.
Yes.
Um, and um, Cassie Fenlon, who is a teen health teacher, and Dan Packard, math teacher, so thanks to those four for bringing these students up.
Thank you, Mr. Barcelona. I would like to take a moment also to extend my appreciation to Mr. Barcelona and all of the student leaders for all they have done uh, with the leadership skills that they have acquired while uh, at the High Five uh, location. They brought some of those skills here, they've worked with our summer enrichment program. They also uh, worked with our new teachers and participated in new teacher orientation, working on te- team building skills. And lastly, they were able to uh, support our leadership retreat this summer. And uh, trust others as you trust is something that I think all of us leaders learn to do. And we uh, completely trusted our students uh, to guide us, uh, to overcome some of our fears. So uh, it was a great learning experience and a great experience uh, for us as leaders uh, to experience you as students as leaders. So uh, as you see here before us tonight, we have our Skills USA leaders and our High Five leaders and that's something that we're really trying to do here at Greater Lowell Technical High Schools, is grow student leaders. So uh, I appreciate the support that we get from, from the board to be able to do this and you can see from what you heard from the students tonight, all the positive impact that experience like this, these have had. So again, I just want to say thank you to the student leaders with us tonight and present you for, with a little certificate of appreciation for you helping me out as part of the leadership retreat this summer. So first, I'd like to call up and thank Logan Briggs. Rebecca Garcia. Anna Debona. Ariana Blake, Ariana's not here, she was.
She's not present.
Sorry, she couldn't make it.
Yeah. Uh, Raymond. And uh, ooh, am I forgetting here? Ariana wasn't here, Ava, Ava was on film.
Ava was in the, Anari.
Anari.
Was not at the administrative retreat.
Oh, okay, but we still wanna thank her as a leader, Anari, thank you. I think Ava was at the leadership retreat if I'm not mistaken.
She was.
So, we can give that to Ava and thank you all for coming tonight, sharing your experiences and we hope that you take what you learn and, and spread, spread the experience throughout our school community. Uh, 'cause that's what we need, we need student leaders, so thank you.
Mr. Barcelona, I want to take your time to thank you. I want to thank, Mr. Barcelona, I want to take the time to thank you for taking the kids and doing this. For, for me, and I can't speak for the whole boss, they can speak. But it's, it's always nice when you guys get up there and tell us exactly what you went through. I think this is the third year we've done this and all three years, someone's got up there and told us exactly how it changed, you guys. And uh, I truly appreciate you guys coming up and doing that and this is why we do this. And uh, thank you guys, I appreciate it.
So uh, uh, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Barcelona, currently we have thirty-four student leaders who have experienced High Five.
Yes, that's right.
So, we continue to grow that and we hope that next summer we can send some more students. So, thank you again and thank you again to Mr. Barcelona for bringing this to my attention, for wanting to, to bring this to Greater Lowell Technical High School. Thank you.
If I could just say something, Mr. Chairman, because you know, this is, this is very exciting, what you guys did. Um, what I kept hearing was, you stepped out of your comfort, comfort zone. You went to a place where you never thought you'd be, you didn't even wanna come here or you were nervous about coming here as a freshman and not knowing anyone. And then you took the challenges on of night walks and being covered in swamp water and working together and feeling like leaders and, and, and stepping to the plate and saying, you know what? I'm equal. And that makes us so proud because we're growing the future leaders right here in this building and right there in front of us. So, you know, you make us all proud, um, I love serving on this board and I love these stories. So, thank you, share them with others and have others be a part of it as well.
Thank you. It's really, it's all great work, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thanks guys.
Thank you. Uh, the next item on my agenda is I'm happy to inform the school committee that Greater Lowell has been awarded a Career Technical Initiative Round Eight Grant Award in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. These funds will be used for training the placement of ten adults in auto collision, ten adults in machine tech, and that will begin in January. The next item I, on my agenda, I'll be looking for approval uh, to accept a donation of a two thousand and five Chevrolet Express thirty-five hundred from Jean-Daw Credit Union. This extended-length cargo van has a value of six thousand dollars and will be used in the automotive programs for service and maintenance procedures.
Can I get a motion to accept the vehicle donation from Jean-Daw Credit Union?
Someone.
Second.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Getch.
Yes.
And the last item on my agenda is I'm seeking the committee's approval regarding the out-of-state travel request to send our Director of Practical Nursing, Christine Messina, to the Annual Council on Occupational Education meeting in Atlanta, Georgia on November fourteenth through sixteenth. This uh, professional development workshop is a requirement of the Adult Post-Secondary Upcoming Accreditation and must be completed within six to eight months of the accreditation uh, of the onsite visit which is scheduled for November fourth through seventh, twenty twenty-four. So this is a required PD.
Got a motion to approve out-of-state travel?
Second.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Getch.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe, appreciate it. Old business, I think uh.
Anything, any reports of business, Sam?
Uh, no reports of business, Mr. Getch.
No, yeah.
No report. Under old business?
Under old business, um, I'm requesting that this uh, school committee take a vote. We have a uh, scheduled October nineteenth meeting, uh, Thursday, October nineteenth. Um, I'm asking, I know it's going to be, our October meetings are always very big. Uh, unfortunately, I have an event that I can't make it to and I'm, um, uh, I, I would love to be at the school committee meeting um, and asking if the school committee could take a vote and move that meeting to October eighteenth.
Anybody object?
Second.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Guess so.
Great news, great news, do we need a vote call or?
I don't believe so, do we need any more?
Yeah, beautiful.
Nope.
Thank you.
We have anything on the new business? Any committee person motions? Reports to subcommittee? And we have to go to executive session, but I don't believe we're taking a vote coming out of executive session. So I'm gonna uh, ask for a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Have a second? Uh, actually, yes, I need a motion to go to executive session first. Motion to go to executive session.
Mr. Hogan?
Second.
Just expand a bit on the title of the executive session or?
That's, we'll get to that. The title, like I said. Motion to enter executive session pursuant to Master General Law thirty uh, thirty uh, A, Section twenty-three A three. Strategy with respect to collective bargaining litigation. An open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position. Public party, the chair so declares Greater Lowell Teachers Organization, Greater Lowell Regional Location Detective School District, M U P dash twenty-one dash E five thirty-five.
Thank you, Mr. General.
You're welcome. We have a motion to go to?
Motion to go to this executive session.
Have a second.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Getch.
Yes. Okay, got a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Second.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Getch.
Yes.